Okay, welcome to the City of East Province Special City Council Meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 11. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it is one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Matter of fact, may we have a call to order, please?
Yes, Council President.
Yeah.
Council President Brito?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rogers?
Here.
Councilwoman Souza?
Here.
Councilman Cahoon?
Here.
And Councilman Morato?
Yeah.
All right. Either the Solicitor or Assistant City Solicitor want to start us off with what we can and cannot do today, this evening?
I'll be happy to, and I did talk to Dylan. Because the way the agenda was posted, without any particular reference to any particular charter item, or actually didn't even say Home Rule Charter, so, but I think we need to keep a discussion at a high level, as a general discussion, as to what maybe you're considering as charter amendments, but I would not really get into the details of particular amendments that you may want to consider at this point because they weren't on the agenda. So, you have to, when you post an agenda, you have to make sure that the public has reasonable notice of what is going to be discussed. And the only thing that was posted on this agenda was a phrase, "Charter Workshop," and it doesn't even say "Home Rule Charter Workshop." So, you gotta be, I've talked to the Assistant Solicitor, I think we're in agreement on this, if we keep it at a high level, we're okay. I'm not totally comfortable going this way, but I know that you want to have at least a meeting, so...
So, if I can ask a question, if we're not going to discuss individual amendment or individual items, what are we doing here? I'd rather not waste the time.
I agree with that. Maybe we could just throw some topics together for a posting for another meeting.
That would be helpful, I think.
Well, I think we can still have a discussion, maybe not detailed.
I think you could have a general discussion of maybe items in the charter that you'd like, general items that you'd like to see changed, or concerns that you've had with charter language, but to get into specific proposals or specific items.
That's what I'm saying, maybe topics that we're all concerned about, just as a topic, but what I'm hearing is we can't get into the merit, or demerit, so, I don't know.
At this time, you can't, because the agenda doesn't reflect any particular proposal.
So, would anyone at this point in time like to start? I'd like to still proceed, at least have the conversation, we're here, let's have the conversation, possibly schedule another one prior to leaving, and make sure we have it all detailed, so we can have that discussion, and a vote if need be.
And again, the Assistant Solicitors here, we've had this discussion, do you essentially agree with that, what I just indicated?
We don't have anything down for a vote. Anything that even appears as a vote would be inappropriate, so, I mean, you can discuss the charter, I mean, functionally, that's the limit of it.
But if we're not voting, can we discuss it anyway?
You can absolutely discuss the charter.
The charter as a group, as a whole? Issues you might have with the charter.
But we have council people who have specific things that they want to talk about, but it's not going to be for a vote, for an example. Can we discuss those specific things that they want to talk about?
Yeah, so, when the Solicitor is talking about whether or not you're talking about specific things, I don't know exactly where that line is. From my perspective, what's posted is Charter Workshop. What you can do is you can have a workshop about the charter. You can't take any votes, you can't take any actions. Highly detailed, specific proposals, if you're not taking any votes, you're not taking any actions, they'll have to get posted at a subsequent meeting. Charter Workshop, any member of the public will be reasonably aware that you're going to have a workshop about the charter.
So, why don't we proceed with asking the questions that we've had already prepared, and having a discussion if necessary, but not vote on it?
Yeah, I anticipated we weren't voting on anything tonight, but maybe, why don't, my suggestion is whoever here wants to bring up whatever you want to bring up, and let's have the Solicitors say if that's, if we're out of order or not. If we can, for instance, if I want to bring up X, Y, or Z, and if I go too far, then our Solicitors are here to tell me I'm going too far. Does that make sense? Or, I'm hearing a couple different things. I'm hearing Solicitors saying we really can't say much.
I think that's fundamentally the issue.
Yeah, and I'm hearing the Assistant Solicitors saying, "We can talk about the charter, we just can't vote."
Yes.
So, okay, so I'm hearing a couple different things here, so...
So, let's not vote, and let's proceed with discussing the questions that we have on here.
So, I can bring up a charter provision, in other words?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and we can have a discussion on that charter provision?
We just won't vote on it.
Okay, sounds good to me. It's my understanding that after this meeting, if one of us wanted to put forward a resolution for a vote at another council meeting, that's possible. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could do, yeah.
The way charter amendments work is they get proposed by resolution. Those resolutions, when they're done well, include two portions, they include the exact language change in its entirety, as well as the question that will go on the ballot. Those questions that go on the ballot then get recommended out to the Secretary of State's office through the Board of Cameresses here. There are some standards they have in terms of specificity, but the resolution and the question need to match, so that should also be vetted at the time that the resolution itself is vetted.
And, Mr. President, if I could ask one question before Councilman Morato starts, a housekeeping question. Charter amendment changes can come from the council, from this body, without a new charter commission?
Correct.
Okay.
I would assume that if they do come, at some point, you can set up the process, there's nothing in state law how the process sets up, but I'd assume you would want to have public hearings?
Right.
Public input, kind of acting like a charter commission. But you don't have, absolutely, the council can propose any amendment at any time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman?
So, my first item that I would like to discuss is 3-9 in the city charter, Home Rule Charter. Do I give my opinion as to what I think the change should be? Is that okay to do that? Is that acceptable?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, currently, the city Solicitors are mayor appointments and council approvals. It's my recommendation, and my feeling, that either both city Solicitor or/and Assistant should be a council appointment. Or, either/or. I'd like to open that up for discussion.
So, based on the last council meeting that we had, and I had put on the docket concerns with Solicitors in the city, not so much the Solicitors in the city, as more the work that needs to be done for the legislative body, and then the work that the administration has, and the city itself as a whole has. I don't, I feel like we, as a city, have traditionally had three Solicitors for a reason. There is a workload in the city between administrative work, city work, legislative work, and other things that fall in between, that having two, only two Solicitors, just, in my opinion, doesn't work well. And I appreciate the effort that the law office has put forward in trying to accommodate everybody, but there just seems to be a little bit of a lack in, on my end, I feel like there was more efficiency when there were three, in my personal opinion, versus the two. And then, having more of an accountability with the Solicitor on the legislative part, I felt was important. Again, not being able to work directly with them, or accessibility, I find, is a little bit of an issue on my part. I don't speak at all for the rest of the council, but just on my experience alone.
Mr. President, if I could just add, my recollection is, in the past, there were the three, but there was one full-time, and two part-time. And there were delineations of work. At one point, one of the part-time Solicitors would cover school department issues. That may have changed, because now the school department has, they always did have an attorney, so, I don't know. I remember going to family court with juvenile cases, and it would be one of the Assistant Solicitors that represented police, juvenile, school cases, so it did work with a clear delineation of duties. So, that was the history, and we got, this last Charter Commission changed all that, and went to two instead of...
No.
Three, or, well, somebody changed it, right? Who went from three to two?
That was...
No, it was just the mayor's election.
Right. That was the administration.
So, it's just a budget item?
Yeah.
So, my question would be if, I could either go forward and support a, both Solicitors being a council appointment, or one of the two being a council appointment. As I stated at the last council meeting, I feel that one of those two Solicitors, I need to feel that they work on behalf of the council. I understand the concept of working for the city, but as the example I gave at the last council meeting, I want to stick by that. And I just feel that we need our own attorney, instead of hiring a third, unless we really need it. I think that would be a good balance.
Possibly, I mean, this, I'm just thinking out loud, as you say, we don't have a formal agenda, so, I'm thinking out loud, it's not always a good thing, but, if maybe one option is, so, I think the mayor and administration needs legal representation, so, I, you know, I don't think that council could have total responsibility for legal services. You know, we're not full-timers, we're not, and the mayor and city administration need a lawyer, city needs a lawyer. So, maybe an option could be, you know, the mayor still has the administrator of the city Solicitor, and the council. We, by charter, have a Solicitor or a legal representation that comes to all our council meetings, and we would have to work out a delineation of how many hours, and if we want to call, we have questions, you know, we have to be careful not to go over whatever we budget, that can all be worked out, so that's an option. Now, that's two, so if we want to do three, you know, we can do three, we can do four, we can, whatever, but I think the mayor and administration has to have, I don't think there's a city or town in Rhode Island where a mayor or city manager doesn't have a Solicitor.
So, I don't know if I'm hearing this correctly, but, so by doing, splitting the two, where one is a mayor appointment, and the other is a council appointment, would that be fair? Would that be balanced? To me, in my mind, it is, that we get to have an appointment out of the two Solicitors.
Right, it'd be an appointment, I think we'd have to work out differences of opinion, I mean, let's be honest, tonight, there's a difference of opinion with our Solicitors, friendly disagreement of opinion, which I'm fine with, you know, we're here to discuss it. We have two different opinions about the content of this meeting, so, if push were to come to shove, which opinion prevails? So, we would have to, you know, at this point, you know, I would think, yeah, the main Solicitor. So, we'd have to work out language that says, if the council, if the council's attorney advises us one way, and then the mayor's attorney were to say apples to oranges, well, which...
Well, in the past, from, and Councilwoman Souza and President Brito, in the past, isn't that where that third attorney came into play, for some of these discussions, or?
I don't think that, I'm sorry.
Is that, am I correct on saying that?
I didn't see that personally in the past. My experience with the three attorneys in the past, I very seldomly used any of them. I called them, I did, I just, I called them for the ordinance or resolution, and that was it. So, I didn't really see ever before a need for a third representation.
I'm not saying that I'm in favor of that, I'm just saying that if there was one of those situations where...
I would think that two of them would just work it out, I would think, no different than, you know, two attorneys working out.
So, if I could be heard, just as a little bit of advice, and Dylan, concerning, there are some charters in cities and towns that allow the mayor to appoint the city or town Solicitor, and that person is the legal counsel to the city or town, and does administrative work and all the other stuff that needs to be done, answers complaints and whatnot. Then, there are, some towns have what they call a council, legal counsel, appointed by the council, and that council serves as your legal counsel to help you get things with, I guess, open meetings law violations, maybe ordinances, whatever, whatever the charter says. But that's how some towns who split it do it. The difference of two or three in this current budget was an issue of a budget item, not, when the mayor, when the mayor was inaugurated, and I think he had a conversation with you, Council President, and me, and I think even Dylan, with the indication was, we're not hiring outside legal counsel anymore. We're tired of having a budget of $100,000 for the city Solicitor, and then we're spending $300,000 on outside legal counsel. So, that was the charge that I was given, to stop hiring legal counsel on the outside, and frankly, we have, in certain circumstances, we still have to, especially these things that were ongoing when Dylan and I got here. But the idea, Dylan can correct me, because I'm wrong, because he was here and I wasn't, but there was a Solicitor who kind of just formed out legal work to people, hired other counsel and oversaw it on a day-to-day basis, from what I can say, did some legal work, but not litigation. Dylan, I think, did zoning and planning for the town, and I think there was another, Attorney Craven did tax appeals, and that was basically, prosecutions, and that was the split. So, there's nothing in the charter that says what the division of work is, that's just how it was set up. The budget kept the same amount, but got rid of the extra counsel and divvied up the rate, the salary between, it's not a salary, the stipend, not even stipend, the legal bills between Dylan and I, so that's how we got to where we are. But if, generally, if you're interested in having your own legal counsel, then you need to put it in the charter that the council has its own legal counsel, can't be the Solicitor, because there's only one Solicitor for municipality, but it can be legal counsel to the city council.
So, can I make a suggestion, so we can keep this meeting less than four hours long? Can we perhaps take, you know, if we're going to come back, we're going to revisit this, we're gonna do this in a meeting where we can actually vote, or take action on specific recommendations? Perhaps if somebody feels strongly about a particular item, we could task that particular council person to put a draft in writing for that next meeting, and then we can have that draft available for public whomever, and then we can, you know, debate the merits of that language, change it, et cetera. Does that sound okay with everybody?
It sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, cool.
And the intent is for amendments for charter change, that's what the person would be drafting?
That's what's going to go on the ballot.
On the ballot, right.
Correct.
We couldn't do this without a charter change, right?
Correct.
So, what we're doing is talking charter change amendments for the ballot.
So, Councilman Cahoon, just so you know, going forward, I would like to keep this meeting anywhere between 45 minutes to an hour tops, if we can. So, there are questions, and those who have questions, let's air them out, hopefully get some answers. We can't vote on them, but moving forward, at least we've talked about them, discussed them, and if we're going to vote on them later on, and we've already had the discussion, there shouldn't be much of a conversation on it.
I'm personally all set with that item, unless anyone else has something.
And I would think, Councilman Cahoon, too, if another member wanted to submit something also, there's nothing stopping us, right? I don't tend to, but if, you know, if Councilman Morato's going to put something together, that's fine, but if I wanted to, if you wanted to, if Councilwoman Souza wanted to, you know, anybody could.
I know, let's just get it done in enough time for it to get on an agenda, docket, and...
Yeah, I mean, tonight, I mean...
To Council, Assistant Solicitor, if we were to draft something, would it be in any violation if that was shared with other council members for their input?
Yes.
And direct their input to you? Would that be...
You can share it with me.
Okay.
You cannot have a conversation amongst yourselves.
No, you're not.
It creates a rolling quorum, if you have one conversation with one counselor, and then even the second counselor has a conversation with the third counselor.
Correct, but they can give their input to you on that.
I can receive each person's individual input on any section, myself, Mike, the Solicitor's office, generally, that's appropriate.
So, whatever I ask to be drafted, I'll have the Assistant Solicitor share with the other council members, and you, the council members can then give their input to whoever.
So, is it fair to say that concludes Section 3-9?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Councilman Morato, you have another question?
I have others, but I'll leave.
All right. Councilwoman Souza, you have one?
Yes, so, one of mine was regarding the ongoing saga, I guess, of appointments, and how the charter has some conflicting with ordinances, and how they kind of intertwine, and then there's state law that has other governing language. So, I'd like to clean it up and make it more of a balanced process, whereas not one governing body has the total authority over all commissions and boards. Where we have two branches of government, then we should equally split, or at least have some where we balance each other out. So, certain ordinances already have language that states the mayor has appointments within that, in addition to council members, but because the charter has it where the mayor appoints all, it essentially null and voids that, those ordinances. So, I'm looking for a little bit more of a balance between both, since we do, we are all elected officials by the people and serve the people, we should all have an input, and I understand that we do have council approval of those appointments made by the administration. I still don't feel like that's a necessary balance.
Which section are you looking at?
So, is that, I was going to ask, is that on 9-1, Section 9-1, is that part of...
So, there's a couple...
Mr. Solicitor, or does that have anything to do with the...
So, Section 2-13 and 14 speak of appointments as they pertain to planning and zoning, and then the...
3-5-1B is the catch-all.
Okay.
3-5-1B?
And with that, I think 1A and B, wait, let me look at... 2-10 also, as it relates to, again, boards and commissions, not so much as employees.
So, what would be your recommendation for, because I have an idea on two out of the three that you mentioned, but what would be your recommendation for 2-13 for the planning board?
I think it should be by, it should follow by ordinance, essentially.
I'm sorry, the suggestion is that all of the appointments, planning, zoning, and then appointments generally, instead of being a catch-all to the mayor, it's everything to be done by ordinance?
But it would need to be changed in the charter, correct?
Well, it would strike any wording that would say that the appointments are made by the mayor, not only, it doesn't say the word "only," but essentially, the meaning is only the mayor would be able to appoint any persons to a committee or board.
So, if you take the planning board for now, it says seven members to be appointed by the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Is that you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Would you change that to, my feeling on that is that we should, every one of us, also members should have...
So, it'd be five and two. That would be my, if I had to, if I had to suggest something, I'm not saying that that's what I'm suggesting, but if I had to make a suggestion, it would give both bodies the opportunity to have an input in these boards and commissions as they...
I like the idea that we at least get the opportunity to appoint someone somewhere.
Right.
Correct. I think that's fair in saying that.
Because as the charter, as it is, the council has the authority to form commissions and councils, just like the mayor does. So, if we've, in history, have made these bodies to serve the public and to be advisory to the council and to the city, then why are we all of a sudden taken out of the picture in dealing with them and making the appointments? So, I think, again, it's a balance.
And that was a charter change, right? That wasn't a budget thing?
No, that's a charter, correct.
Okay, right.
Anyway, all appointments shouldn't be budgetary.
Right, that's right. I just want to remind folks that we're here because there were charter changes...
Right.
...that are new to the city, the exception of maybe, you know, the number of Solicitors, but all of these other things are, we inherited from the recent Charter Commission. But I would add, I would agree with, there should be a balance, as it stands right now, the city council makes no appointments other than a city clerk. And, you know, we want to work together, we want to work with the administration, and having a say, even on things like, something simple as a beautification committee, a carousel commission, those are now all areas that we have no say in. Some of them, we have to confirm, but it's simply a yes or no vote, it only serves to stop something, not to recommend anyone.
Yeah, I guess my only concern about pulling back some of that stuff, or trying to pull back some of that stuff, is that the city had really forever to observe a council manager form of government. And after having forever to observe that form of government, the city, by and large, elected to go for a strong mayor. So, you know, while I'm all for checks and balances, I would like to point out that the city overwhelmingly supported the idea of a charter change that empowers a strong mayor to be a strong mayor. So, we're two years into that, you know, what I would rightly consider at this point an experiment, you know, so, I just, I guess I'm just saying, let's be careful, right? What we monkey with in here, because it's the foundational government for everything we do, the foundational document for everything we do.
I think what I'm going to do, for the sake of saving time, and since we can't really discuss into detail a lot of these items, I think what I'm going to do is just contact Dylan, and just put forward some resolutions, and that way we can have a real discussion. And I think that's the best way to do it, because honestly, I think we're wasting our time right now. It's good to have this dialogue, but we can't really get into the weeds of these conversations, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, putting forward resolutions doesn't mean that it has to pass, but it starts that conversation, so...
And again, at the end of the day, it's just, it's providing the voters with an opportunity to have a choice. to have a choice in what they want based on what we present them, so they don't have to vote for and can vote against, or they can vote for and not against any of these changes, but it gives them the opportunity to see what they want based on.
And it's also my understanding that, just because this was voted on a couple of years ago, doesn't mean that it can't change. There's communities that put ballots, questions on the ballot at every election to tweak and modify their home rule charter. So there is nothing wrong with fixing what we think is broken, nothing. So, I mean, because, because voters at the time voted for that, doesn't mean that they can't change their mind based on, you know, how the government's working, if they like it, don't like it, and that's what we're doing. So I think that's, from this discussion forward, that's what I'm going to do, I'm just going to submit some resolutions, and hopefully we can set another meeting or work through them during council meetings, but we don't have a lot of time to begin with. I believe the deadline is August 5th. Correct?
Off the top of my head, that sounds correct, but I don't have that figure in front of me.
Okay. Councilwoman, you have anything else you want to share along with section 3-5, 1B?
No, I do not.
Okay.
No, I, I don't, I think, which is what Councilman Kahoon earlier said, if we can't delve into specifics tonight, then, you know, it's, it's going to happen if we keep talking. So I think we all need to come back at the next workshop or council meeting, or whenever, before August, anyway, and with, go through the charter, and every one of us make, draw up recommendations for ballot items that we would send to the attorneys for refining, and then, then we vote on which ones would go on the ballot.
If I can just address one portion of it, and I know that this may sound crazy, because we're talking about an August deadline, but the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Charter changes are very complicated, because they can impact other sections of the charter. So not only do you have to check the language itself, I have to cross-check, or, Mike and I have to cross-check the language throughout the remainder of the charter. Missed commas change meanings of entire sections, and so you want second and third people to take a look at it, because in your mind, something becomes very clear, but then when you give it to someone that hasn't been working on it, they, they can see things you don't. So the greater period of time we have, the better.
I think the good thing about this workshop is it gives me an idea as to what other council members are thinking of. So going forward, if a resolution was to come about, I at least have some thought into this at this point, you know? If you were at a court of resolution, I only have so many days to review it and then come up and discuss it. At least right now, it gives me a general idea as to where people are standing, what changes they're looking to make at this time. Councilman Kahoon, you have any...
No, I don't. I've just, you know, it doesn't sound like we need to have one dedicated meeting just to do a bunch of changes either, right?
Right.
I mean, so come up to the March 17th meeting, or the April, whatever it is, 4th, can't remember the date off the top of my head, you know, somebody comes in with a couple, or one here, one there, and to Dylan's point, right, we want to get it done earlier rather than later, but I don't think we need to have a marathon session where we're just doing charter stuff.
So at the next several meetings, we can kind of chip away at it as well, and, you know, make some introductions at that point in time.
Could I make a suggestion, as opposed to the solicitors? If we have the same ideas, slightly different on the same charter provisions, is there any way that he can notify us of that, so that we're not being redundant and submitting three separate resolutions?
I would think also, not only that the council person should be notified, but they can have the discussion on it, considering that it's not a quorum, unless that's a violation somehow, but I thought a violation would have to be in some way of...
Two counselors can talk to each other. The risk is, if either counselor then talks to some other counselor, you've created a rolling quorum. So it, it is difficult to have legislative editing discussions outside of, of, of open meeting amongst many counselors. Individual counselors with counsel, with attorneys, is fine, you can have a very in-depth conversation. To the extent that they are redundant, I would suggest that if there are four proposals for section 3-9, that we have four proposals for section 3-9 presented at a meeting, and you, you use that opportunity to hash it out.
All right. Councilman Rodrick?
No, I'm fine. I'll put together what I, what I have on my mind, and I'll start bringing them forward at council meetings.
We have a general idea, at least at this point in time, at least for some of the things that we've discussed. Councilman Morado, you want to just table some or the other, or you just want to...
Yeah, I'm just going to table, I'll, I'll get together with the solicitor and...
Okay.
...draft something for, at least one item for the April meeting, April 7th meeting.
So what I'm hearing is we're both, it's okay to adjourn at this point in time and no further discussion on the charter?
Mr. President, I move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Kahoon. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a second on that motion from Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please, county, city clerk, please.
Councilman Kah, Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.